August school board meeting. If you will, please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Ron. Cron, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Casper? Mr. Deming?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Ragoma?
Here.
Mr. Sardis?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
R D R Nell?
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, the recognition of Dr. Galasso. He was unable to join us tonight. He is ill. So we will move on to questions and comments from guests. Please give us your name, your municipality of residence, and limit your speech to three minutes. First name I have on the list is Mr. Burrell.
Yes, my name is Anthony Burrell. And some of you may know me. I've been writing emails to people. My son, Joe, is working with the marching band last year, had a contract to be paid for $1,500 worth of services rendered and has yet to be paid. It was, I have a copied contract here. The other person who worked with him, they get paid. All of a sudden, they say there's no money. Where's the money? Everybody's looking into it, but nobody's come across to write a check. That's the services. I want to know when it's going to be paid and who's going to look into it to handle it.
I advise the board not to comment on a pending personnel action. I assume the administration has received your emails and are looking into it or have responded, but in any event, my advice to the board is to not comment publicly about a personnel matter.
Okay. Well, we asked privately and nobody's rendered any kind of opinion. Is that your position?
I don't have a position. It's the first I'm hearing of it. I'm just advising my client not to speak publicly about a personnel matter. It's not an appropriate forum for it to do so. You may consider filing a lawsuit. I don't know.
Not really.
But that's my advice to the board. I think that you can certainly write to the board and it may respond. You can certainly write to the administration. It may respond. My advice is just very limited. I don't want my client responding to a personnel matter in public that it's hearing about in public comment. It's not fair to the employee. It's also not fair to my client. That's just...
The employee did not even want me to say anything. He's been keeping his mouth quiet and he's been working for nothing.
Mr. Cox, we will investigate and get back to Mr. Burrell.
Now, I have more to say. He recently applied for a job and all of a sudden, the job out of nowhere gets posted and out of nowhere gets filled. Are you advising your board not to speak on this matter as well, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the position of everybody on the board.
Mr. Burrell, I got your email and I responded to it this afternoon and said that I would look into it.
Okay.
It was the first I had heard from him.
It's very unfortunate. Yes. When will we receive a response?
Do you have time to respond to Mr. Burrell? We will respond as soon as we can, as soon as we have the information. It's the first time I'm hearing about it as well.
I believe not. I believe I emailed you prior. You did not respond as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rumble?
My remarks are going to be a little bit over three minutes and I apologize, but I hope I'll have the courtesy of not being interrupted. It's only on one page, so just to let you know, it's a defined thing. Members of the board, administration, and the public, the pile of money on the stage in front of you represents wealth of my family that we have worked hard to acquire over the past year. It is also the tribute or rent that is demanded by Penridge School District to remain in our home. If we do not acquiesce to this plunder, a bureaucratic process will begin that would ultimately end in my family being forced from our home at gunpoint by the sheriff, and the home would be sold at auction to satisfy the appetite of the Penridge School District Administration. Every year, this scenario plays out all across Pennsylvania as up to 10,000 families, many with children, are evicted from their homes as their home goes up for tax sale. Seniors who have paid a lifetime of taxes and paid off their mortgage are often forced to pinch pennies to come up with their annual tribute or sell their home and move elsewhere. Where is the humanity in all of this? Think of the children. The way the government schools are funded is unsustainable and broken. It is based upon a feudal English system where only the wealthiest could own land and that land generated profit, so it was taxed. Is this how a moral and humane society in today's age should operate? Should the school district be allowed to threaten every homeowner with eviction from their home because they either don't want to or can't afford to pay the taxes that Penridge demands? How can this board and administration justify increasing this burden every year? The current school funding system is also an injustice to students in poorer districts who receive less money for their education. Property tax independence legislation has been floating around Harrisburg since 2006, and the current version known as SB 76 is financially sound in spite of the rhetoric coming from union lobbying. It would eliminate property taxes and replace them with an increased income tax and a small increase in sales tax. It would match current local school funding at 100% and tie increased spending to increases inflation or by voter referendum. If you want to build a fancy $5 million sports complex, you should seek direct voter input. One of the main arguments put forth against this legislation is loss of local control. So I ask you, how much control do we have when the Penridge budget has more than doubled in size from $66.5 million to $140 million and only two years out of those last 14 have we gone without an increase in property tax? The answer is little or non-local control. The problem of pensions and other unfunded mandates was created in Harrisburg and must be solved in Harrisburg. Instead, we have the illusion of having some local control because a board is elected that simply tries to grease the squeaky wheel of the day rather than confront the real issues. Often, these candidates are supported by the unions with their own agendas and egos to satisfy. Penridge is an example of the continuing failure of the monopoly that the state claims on education. A free market with choices and competition works in business, politics, and virtually every other area of life except the public education apparatus that in the words of the global education speaker, Dr. Yong Ju, to this district a few years ago back, said turns children into, quote, "intellectual sausage." An apparatus that is controlled by unions and administration and plunders property owners year after year. A mediocre system that we are forced to pay top dollar for. A free market system would provide a better education because it would compete for our dollars rather than take them under threat of seizing our homes. To members of the public who have their property taxes paid as part of their mortgage, please examine your escrow statement and take a hard look at that figure. Imagine it as a pile of cash, much like the one in front of me, only perhaps much bigger. Stop allowing the school district to sell you a monthly increase that they make sound like it's extra money you have just laying around, an increase that can force families from their homes. Ask yourself if the American dream is a home in security for your family or a monthly payment you can barely afford. In closing, I register my protest at having my family's wealth plundered by this school district. In light of the doubling of the budget in less than 15 years and the fact we have only had two years with no tax increases, I ask the board and administration, how high will you raise our taxes? What is your limit? And when will you start addressing the serious issues and work to improve the educational process instead of just voting on dollars? I encourage you to visit the website www.p t c c dot U S to learn more about property tax elimination.
Thank you, Mr. Rumble.
Hi, my name is Joseph Burrell. I just actually heard from my father. I just, he pretty much, you guys pretty much answered everything that I needed to hear, so I have no further comments from this point on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish just to comment? Not, we'll move to the consent calendar. Whether there are any of these issues on the consent calendar that board members want to have voted on separately. Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed items A through I. Moved by Mr. Deming? And a second?
Second.
Second. And Mr. Thompson, thank you. Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Comments or questions from board members?
I have some questions about the student report. There was one person listed on there who had two different dates. And then also on the E D R report, all the people are listed as 8/24 when, I mean, it seems like it should be 8/25, but then there's one person on the E D R who is listed as starting on 8/24, and then they're listed on the other report starting on 8/25.
Yes, Mrs. Miguel?
Right, so sometimes when we get the E D R report, the contracts back or the pars, they will have either the day of the board meeting or the following date. And in this case, there were two different individuals working. One was working on one report, one was working on the other. And again, very busy time, as I explained, we're trying to get as many people on the board report as we could, and the E D R report did list the dates as 8/24 and they should have been 8/25. So they should actually be, you know, effective the next date if we want to make that change. I'm agreeable to that.
Mr. Deming and Mr. Thompson, add amendment to the motion.
Sure.
Anything else, Mrs. Jordan?
No, that was it.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next comes the student liaison report. Since school hasn't convened, I don't believe we have a student liaison tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, you're sitting at the other end of the table. My apologies for overlooking you. Please give us your report or your comments and introduce yourself if you would.
I'm Connor McDonald. I'm filling in for Vanessa Lazzana. I have a few things I need to tell you guys. Basically, we have two things right now that we're working on for student council. Homecoming is our first thing we do every year. We have the dates for both these. October 16th is the first date for homecoming, and October 23rd is going to be pink out. And we've earned pink out for the past few years. That's where we're doing all the money we get from T-shirts and a football game to breast cancer for the research for that. So those are the two things we're working on now. And during the summer, the officers are meeting. I'm not on the officers, by the way, you're filling in, but the officers are meeting and going over that. But I'm the chair for pink out, so I'm handling that with my other chair. And right when school starts, then we're going to start working on getting the purchase orders and things like that now. So that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm glad I didn't announce you by the name in front of you because I'm glad you're confused. I'm going to omit the president's report tonight and move directly to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Yornell. First, I'd like to thank the Guth Elementary School for their displays in the district meeting room. Also, a special thank you goes to the Upper Bucks Chamber of Commerce. They were kind enough to donate 60 book packs for our backpacks for our needy children, and we are most grateful for that. So thank you to them. A piece of good news to report, Roberta Simmons, a health and physical education teacher at the high school, since 2008 received a distinguished merit award from the Pennsylvania Athletic Trainers Association over the summer. The award is presented to an athletic trainer with at least 15 years' experience and demonstrates distinguished professional achievement in its practice. Roberta has actually been a certified trainer for 35 years and has worked at Penn State, Lehigh, and Bucknell. She also has worked at the Keystone State Games, several USA Olympic festivals, the World University Games, and the Summer Olympics in both Barcelona and Spain. So congratulations to Roberta and many thanks for her representing Penridge in such a fine In order to give our children the best chance of meeting with academic success on standardized tests in the classrooms, it is critical that we ensure that they are fit physically, socially, and emotionally. Research and continued reports confirm that academic achievement improves when students' physical needs are met and when a school incorporates social and emotional learning into its culture and its curriculum. And aside from that, obviously, for preparing students for their future, every year, the National Association of Colleges and Employers does a survey. And the NACE group said, of course, top candidates need to have the requisite major in GPA and relevant work experience, but it's the soft skills that make them ideal. Henceforth, I just wanted to reiterate why we are once again moving forward with our district takes pride theme. We will have a theme of the month, same as last year, and a quote of the week and a blurb of the day. And I just wanted to remind everyone, and I'll be telling students this on the first day, September's theme is trustworthiness. Students will be reminded that people who are trustworthy are worthy of your confidence and they are reliable. They can be counted on to do what they say they will do. So that's my report tonight, R D R Nell.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to the committee reports. The first is activities. Mrs. Jordan?
The activities committee has not met since our last meeting, and the next committee meeting is scheduled for September 9.
Thank you. Curriculum. Curriculum committee also has not met and will be scheduled for September 14, 2015, in this room at 6:30. It will be joined with technology that night. Facilities, Mr. Casper? Mr. Casper is not here yet, so we'll postpone that. I believe he's going to be late. I believe also, this Cron, I misquoted, it should have been seven zero, not eight zero, so my apologies. So we'll move to finance. Mr. Sardis is also not here tonight. The finance committee met on August 3, 2015. There are a total of five motions that are on the agenda tonight that were discussed. I believe all of those were discussed at that meeting. So the first motion, which I will make, is the motion to approve the OMAAS LOC extensions. Those include three different issues, D-25, G-18, and F-22 for the amounts listed. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Moved and seconded to approve the OMAAS LOC extensions. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Second motion is to approve the contracts that were discussed on August 3. Poetry align for in the amount of $250, the Conrad Segal actuaries in the amount of $12,000 to $14,000, and ProQuest LLC in the amount of $2,295. Do I have a second to that motion? Contracted. Thank you. Mrs. Miller? Moved and seconded. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The third motion is to approve a deputy tax collector for Silverdale Borough, and although it's not listed here, I believe the name is Jennifer Progress. I move that we appoint her. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The third motion is, the fourth motion, I apologize, is to approve the request from the Sauterton Area School District to exonerate the 2015-2016 real estate taxes. And I will make that motion. I will also offer the addendum that the board had leave, discussed this and decided not to approve this, so the appropriate vote, if you wish to vote against this, would be no. This was written in a manner consistent with the recommendation of the solicitor. Do I have a second to the motion to approve the tax exoneration?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
No.
No.
I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries six zero one, I'm sorry, zero six one, it fails. Moving on to the motion to approve the settlement agreement for students identified as 2016-04. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next finance committee meeting is scheduled along with facilities on September 8, 2015. At this point, we'll move to the intermediate unit. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. We did not have a scheduled meeting, but we did have a phone meeting called on August 18. A very short 15-minute meeting for the sole purpose of approving personnel changes so the IU can become functional and people are in place, and also include hiring personnel for the new Head Start program. The next meeting is September 15 at 7:00 PM, held at the IU at Shade Retreat Lane. Do I have a second? Thank you.
Thank you. And if you see Dr. Galasso, please give him our best wishes.
What's his actual retirement date or his last day at work?
It was, it's September 15.
Oh, so the day of that meeting?
Yes, it is. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
We'd better have a good dinner, right?
Yes.
(laughing).
Moving to personnel. Mr. Ragoma?
Thank you. Personnel committee met on August 3. The first motion is to approve the following job descriptions, secretary slash benefit specialist, secretary, that is a, B is secretary to the Department of H R, and C, district secretary slash receptionist.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second to that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Moved and seconded to approve revised job descriptions of the three positions listed. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next?
Second motion is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Penridge School District and Penridge Education Association to add to the M O U of October 27, 2014, a guidance coordinator grades nine through 12 at the specified rate of 70% of $2,500.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion for the M O U?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Comments or questions from board member on this motion? Not? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Ragoma?
Thank you. The next personnel committee meeting is scheduled for September 9, 2015.
Thank you. Policy review will be Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. The policy committee has not met, but our next scheduled meeting is September 9 at 6:30.
Thank you. We'll move to the Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. The Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee met on August 20, 2015. The minutes will be posted on the Upper Bucks County Tech School website. Just a few points, the construction right now is 78% complete on a cost basis. They are still on track for December completion. And for, as of last Thursday, total enrollment for this fall is 682 students, 245 of which are Penridge. The next meeting of the Upper Bucks County Tech School is scheduled for September 17, 2015, at 7:30 at the school.
Thank you.
Dr. Yornell, I'd like to make a correction. I said 6:30, but there's three meetings that night, so the policy meeting can be somewhere. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Act 48, Mrs. Schmidt?
You're going to skip technology.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I always do, so let's back up, Mr. Thompson, and give you an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next technology committee meeting is scheduled for September 14, as was discussed earlier in conjunction with the curriculum committee.
Okay. Thank you, and my apologies. Moving on then to Act 48. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. The Act 48 committee did not meet. The next meeting is scheduled for October 8, 2015.
Okay. And ad hoc fundraising. Mrs. Jordan?
Yep. So the fundraising committee met last week on August 17. I'm just going to go over a few highlights. The minutes will be posted soon. The War Memorial, so far, the group working on that has raised over $18,000, which I believe is enough to cover all of the costs. And we talked about the dedication that's planned on September 11. And then we also talked about that that's probably also going to be the same day that the, that the whole, the rest of the facility will be dedicated? Right, yeah, dedicated. I'm not saying word. Yeah, so that the weight room, we're starting to work on fundraising for the weight room equipment, and we talked about using CoStar prices and bundling those things. Outreach, the district is becoming a member of the Upper Bucks Chamber of Commerce, which will allow it to use the database and reach out to businesses that way. And then we discussed the green and white clothing incentives, adding some other incentives for individuals who donate. And so that will be in the minutes, and I believe there'll be some more information coming to the board about that. So that's it, and the next meeting will be scheduled as needed.
Thank you. Mr. Casper has still not arrived, so I will circle back to the facilities committee. And as I noted, this committee met along the finance on August 3, 2015. Only one motion resulted from that meeting. The motion has to do with obsolete items. They are listed in the agenda, items A through E for the various buildings and departments in the district. So I will move that we approve the obsolescence of these items. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ragoma. Comments or questions from board members on the motion on obsolete items? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for September 8 in conjunction with the finance committee meeting. We will now move to unfinished business. Any unfinished business for board members? If not, new business. As Mrs. Cron noted, and I believe sent out information on, there needs to be a motion to approve the 2016 candidates for the P S B A officers, or offices. It says offices, I guess it's offices and officers. So do we have a motion for those candidates? I believe we were sent a list of the candidates, which I printed this afternoon. Isn't that promptly misplaced? I have no idea where it was placed.
I have, it's on the agenda.
In the list, okay.
I unfortunately don't know these people. I don't know if we have any additional bio-information than was presented. It's really not very much. Are there recommended people to support here?
Well, I will comment that obviously, the committee that drew up the slate or began the slate made some recommendations, although they didn't make specific recommendations. I will just tell you that at least two of these individuals are relatively local. Mark Miller is a longtime member of the Centennial School Board and has been very active in P S B A for many years. And Larry Feinberg of the Havertford Township School District is someone who has been a very vocal advocate for public education funding in Pennsylvania. I, for one, get a million emails from the gentleman, but I do believe that he is a strong advocate for...
He must be good.
Well, I don't know if he's good or not in that sense, but he clears my inbox, but that's all right, as I say. but he clears my inbox, but that's all right, as I say. So my recommendation would be to put those two gentlemen together. And I believe Mr. Passanetto, whose name I probably have murdered, is another one that is relatively local in that school district. So I'd actually ask that we choose those three candidates and move them to the PSBA. Do I have a second to the motion? I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Comments or questions from Board members? Not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Let's go back to the agenda. Is there any other new business? If not, I'll move to announcements. The next regularly-scheduled School Board meeting is Monday, September 28, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. There were negotiations held with the support staff, PESTA, on July 30, 2015. There is an executive session scheduled tonight following this meeting, and it will be for the purpose of negotiations and personnel matters. At this point, comments or questions from guests? Mr. Rush, you look like you're rushing the podium.
Nah, not really. Good evening, Lee Rush. Just have a question. A couple of years ago, there was a education retreat. I think it was chaired by Dave Thompson.
Oh, no.
Is this on?
It's not on.
A couple of years ago, Dave spearheaded a retreat or summit. I just wonder if there's any plans to have another one.
We've talked about a retreat Board member, a potential administration retreat. We have not talked specifically about a follow-up on the summit. Mr. Rush?
So I'd like to make a suggestion that we do that again. I think it'd be a really good idea to continue that on a regular basis. Maybe once a year would be great. Every...